...difference between need and expansion and want and expansion. If a need existed, wouldn't it be apparent by now? Wouldn't it have been apparent 12 years ago? Wouldn't the FAA have fast-tracked this application because of the immediate need? These issues have sat in the office of the FAA for 12 years as if there was no need. The question of need is a myth. Want is the basis for this endeavor, and without need, it's a huge waste of taxpayers' money and the exercise of wasteful and bad government policy. There is no indication that any businesses have left the community or that any businesses have decided not to come to Greensburg because of the lack of expansion. Thus, no need. For some reason, the current and past government officials seem to think it is prudent to locate an unneeded expanded airport in the midst of multiple baseball diamonds, the city swimming pool, the city park, the city bowling alley, the county fairgrounds, a miniature golf course, and the country club. The issue of safety has been either discarded or moved to the back burner. This is not a minor airport expansion. It was originally predicted to be a $32 million three-stage expansion disrupting prime farmland and the environment when there are four existing airports within a 30-minute drive. The money for the expansion would come from FAA grants. These federal grants are taxpayers' money for something that is apparently not needed in Greensburg. Today, the only people who have benefited from such federal expenditures have been limited to just a few. The total figure that has been paid to the consulting engineering firm over the last 12 years, the attorney's fees, the city attorney fees, the ball-stay consultant fees, an economist's fee, attorney's fees, landowners have incurred, fees paid to private attorneys, money's paid to purchase part of the airport from the Greensburg Airport Corporation at $20,000 per acre is shameful. The big expenditure is yet to come. Land purchases, construction costs, and materials all result in more taxpayers' money spent for something not needed but wanted by a few. Economic development is another myth of the proponents. Without any credible or demonstrable evidence that this project will result in significant economic development, then it is nothing but speculation and conjecture. It is the gambling with taxpayers' money in the unsubstantiated hope that something fantastic in terms of economic development will result if this airport is expanded. There has been no reliable feasibility study or return on investment analysis to indicate with any degree of certainty that there will be economic development. Without this, there is virtually no basis for the expansion. With no economic development, the only true beneficiaries will be only those who own and hangar their private airplanes and who fly on the weekends. The people of Greensburg will realize no benefit from this project. It is terrible government policy to continue with this endeavor since there is no need, no economic development, high taxpayer expenditures, unsafe surroundings, wasteful government policy, and lack of respect for longtime landowners. Then the issue of eminent domain should be discussed. There has been a continuing 12-year underlying threat of eminent domain. The constant cloud of eminent domain has always been there for 12 years. The Goddard family has owned their property since 1850 and has been recognized by the Department of Agriculture of Indiana on two separate occasions for its longevity in the same family. It has become our heritage. Our father, mother, and younger brother have all died having worried and agonized over the actions and lack of actions of the government of Greensburg. This has been a true disappointment, especially in view of the service and interest in this community by our parents and our ancestors. Eminent domain is a necessary and important tool for state and local governments to provide for the better good of society. Millions of citizens have enjoyed the results of eminent domain. That being said, it is important to note that the abuse of eminent domain or its application without a justifiable basis is one of the most dangerous abuses of government authority and an infringement of private property ownership. If government can take private property without a justifiable basis, then there is nothing to stop it from taking land for any reason whatsoever. Eminent domain is a very serious issue, so where is the justification? Finally, and possibly most importantly, there is a huge question mark as to whether or not the city or the Board of Aviation Commissions even possess eminent domain authority to take land outside of their jurisdiction. Surely one would agree that land in Fort Wayne or Evansville could not be taken for this project. That being true, then one can only conclude there must be a limit to where land can be taken. The BOAC is a city board whose members are appointed by the mayor of the city. In IC 822-1-5E1, it clearly states the BOAC can acquire land inside or outside of its jurisdiction. Acquire has to mean purchase and not take, or they would be able to take land in Fort Wayne or Evansville if they so desired. Regardless what the word acquire means, the fact still remains that BOAC or an airport authority cannot have greater power than the city it functions under. If the city cannot apply eminent domain outside of the city limits, then neither can one of its boards or agencies. Even if the statute clearly and specifically gives the agency or board such ability, the Indiana Court of Appeals in no uncertain terms established this fact in the case of the City of Zionville versus Hamilton County Airport Authority, 970 Northeast 2nd 185. What is frustrating is that there have been multiple membership compositions of the Board of Aviation Commissioners in the past 12 years. What has been stated and discussed in the presence of one combination of commissioners has not been heard or thought by another combination of commissioners, so that at any one time, none of these facts or arguments are current information to the current sitting board. This results in the most recent board being charged with moving forward oblivious to what has been previously stated over the last 12 years. This project has been a train wreck from the beginning and should be abandoned until such time a clear and present need exists. Then economic development would be a natural result. The city has done nothing but try to pound a square peg into a round hole under the intoxicating lure of low-cost taxpayer money. It has now taken 12 years to accomplish nothing, submitted by the Goddard Family LLC by its principals, Stephen G. Goddard, Jane Philip Goddard, and Barbara J. Goddard.
Was that three minutes?
So the letter was submitted...
And I had three minutes.
Yeah, we're getting this understood each other, but that's fine. She had three people she was reading, so we gave her nine minutes. Get back on track here. Next speaker on the speakers list, Gordy Smiley.
Do you reckon we could just give everybody the handstand up straight?
Yeah.
We're almost to the speaker. Let's get through that.
Gordon Smiley, 7446 West, 100 South, Greensburg, Indiana. Thank you for being able to tend to see me receiving. I guess I want to think about some of the things that were said by the representatives when they made the comment about that Greensburg or DeCater County are the region. We've got to think about this, not I. I think we should think about this as we. We, not DeCater County, we the region, okay? When you look on the map down here from looking at the airport, really between here and Cincinnati, it doesn't really show anything else on there that could be utilized. I guess I don't want to be a team player with the other counties around us. I don't want to be just an I. And I think one of the things that you said, that there was five options and there was only two left, and they disregarded the other three. One of the other options you put on there was listed was an outside the airport down here near Batesville. I don't know why we can't be a team player. There's some of that stuff down there that makes me used to be looked at a little more serious about how it could be handled. I don't disagree that this airport lacks its ability to be able to land these big planes, but I was going almost three weeks ago during the Memorial Day holiday, and I saw 737 Vice President Pence land over there. So within 35 minutes of distance here, we could land anything in this area. But when we go southeast, it is a restriction. I understand that, and I want to help that field, that area, help us all. So I just think that we need to look at other options that might possibly be out there and not consider this just a DeCater County. I want to be a region. Just look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Reed.
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 Sorry. My name is Todd Reed. I'm a 2421 county roadrunner, 50 West. And I am a user of an airport, and I know there's a lot of discussion about the economic viability of this. I've been a user of this airport for 34 years. I represent a company by the name of Next Generation that is an agriculture, agribusiness company, and it has had steady growth for this 34 years. And we have used exclusively this airport and the aircraft that we use on this airport has been based there. Give you a sense of the value, I guess, as we've talked about tonight, of users. This company provides services to the ag industry and in 1990 started, and we had materials that would go on zero acres, and as of today, we have grown from that to 90 million acres. And the grow crop industry in the United States represents 180 million. So created a company that can touch half the airable acres in the United States, and I've done that exclusively with aircraft. I have locations, I've grown for locations throughout the Midwest, and is currently on a location in Nebraska. This aircraft has to go from here to Nebraska and back twice a week to do this job. So the growth has been substantial. We've been a beneficiary of this, and I just wanted to say thank you to this community and to the FAA for providing us the services that we need. We are, I have reported on this probably in the last three or four meetings ever since 1999, and so all those years we have talked about potential, and we are getting that potential. We are using this airport exactly for what it's for. I know it's inconvenient. I know it's uncomfortable for adjoining landowners, but I have to report that we've done a great job. So during that, I want to thank you. Our company employees want to thank you, and half the United States of America's agriculture farmers want to thank you for this opportunity. So, thank you.
Well, we've been through the list one time, and I think Mark Copeland was, let me get back up and finish reading a couple of letters.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to be local, local.
Tom Simpson.
Local, die.
Okay. This is also to Honorable Dan Manis. Valley of Greensburg Thermo sees the value and benefit of the expansion of the Greensburg Municipal Airport to local businesses. Expansion and upgrade in services will support business growth and make the city more attractive to potential investors. The additional travel options available when the expanded airport also will enhance business travel opportunities to and from Greensburg. As a part of the Greensburg Business Community, Valley supports the efforts to expand the Greensburg Municipal Airport, Michaela Loco, Valley of North America. This is from the Economic Development Corporation, Greensburg, DeCater County. Please accept the attached grant support letter from 2012 and our 2017 email and printed board approval votes. For this support letter is clear indication that the Greensburg, DeCater County Economic Development Corporation continues in ongoing support of the Greensburg Airport expansion project. A couple comments. We were very fortunate in our community to have some corporate headquarters here, some plants in our community that are significant. One, Kova, agribusiness, as the prior speaker spoke, he is part of Kova. We're very fortunate that farming business is doing so well in this community with the airport, probably can do better with the airport expansion. They could fly commercial jets, oh, not commercial, private jets. We could also fly an official from Honda, now he sources, Valleyo, Hitachi, GCom. We could also fly critical new parts here when needed, some lines don't break, you have to stay broken down, to Honda, Valleyo, Hitachi, GCom. A basic economic and financial principle, and I think all farmer, manufacturers, service sector people would agree to, that's time equals money. Time is money. You're not able to fly direct, you lose time. You fly apart in, the line is not down as long. You fly an official again, if he goes to Columbus, he loses, maybe probably an hour of both flights. This is a growing community. It's going to grow. It's grown steadily, not dramatically, but steadily. This airport will help that growth. It's been statistically proven that flying is the safest form of travel. If it wasn't, you wouldn't see monstrous airports in Chicago or in Atlanta. They're in urban areas. We have crashes, horrible tragedies, and there wouldn't be those airports there. They'd be way out in the country somewhere, but that's where they are. They're in urban areas. I don't think because of the safety concern that that's a critical issue. Flying is the safest form of travel. From a standpoint of costs, economic development, I think the economic impact study that you guys were handing out today in informational system, and I would advise anyone who would like to take a look at that, to read through that 2012 study and see if they then believe that there is an economic benefit to general aviation airports. I don't understand, I've had the opportunity to be in economic development for 30 years. Tennessee, Indiana, Georgia, I could give examples, but I'm not going to do that because I'm not going to do that right now, because then people would say, well, that was in Tennessee, but that was Georgia, that's not here. They're still flying, and it is still important to some of those communities, just like it will be here too. And I've seen those communities grow. I've never heard a community, never, large, small, urban or rural, say, we regret expanding our airport. I've never heard that in 30 years. Thank you.
Williams, Jim McIntyre has some additional comments.
Just kind of continue on where I left off at, talking about the safety and everything in the airport when I dropped off. To my knowledge, and I haven't been on fire department since 1993, Greensburg Fire Department being a paid department, very good department, and they've made great strides in new equipment and everything else, but to my knowledge, since 1993, at that point in time, talking about increased air traffic and everything, Greensburg Fire Department does not have equipment to be able to deal with aircraft fire situations or rescue situations. In 1993 until now, unless somebody can correct me, there was only two people in the entire county that was trained in aircraft crash and rescue. That was myself and Captain John Tumley. If that's changed, I don't know about it, but neither one of us are on fire department anymore. So you don't have firefighters specifically trained to deal with aircraft situations, and you're talking about renting larger aircraft, more aircraft, if, again, the big if, these businesses that are already here saying they need the airport, they didn't need the airport then. Columbus was fine, Batesville was fine, wherever they flew into. Now all of a sudden, they seem to think that an airport's going to do it more good. We're on that if subject here. So in regards to safety, I don't think that Greensburg is prepared for your if scenario of more and more of a crash coming in. Who's going to pay for it? You're talking about enlarging the airport, bringing in more traffic. The 5% is great now, but what about, who's going to maintain it? How's it going to be maintained? How many employees is it going to employ? Who's going to pay their salaries? Where's that money coming from? Nobody's discussing the long-term amount. They're looking at that 5% that you want to take out of taxpayer money. Pay for it. Who's going to pay for the equipment to maintain it? Who's going to pay for the employee salaries? Where's that money coming from? Is that coming out of 5%? That's what they're not telling us. They've got a plan, but where's the long-term? Where's the breakdown? Has anybody seen a breakdown of the expenses this airport's going to cost? And who's it going to cost? I'm not willing to pay for it. I'm sure quite a few of these people don't want to pay somebody else's salary for an airport that we're playing the wadi and game with. And that's all I got.
Thank you. I think Donna Stevens passed maybe the first time.
Good evening, Jean. My name is Donna Stevens, and I live in 702 Hart Road, so I'm a stone's throw away from the airport. I have been against the airport from the beginning, and the main reason is because of the folks that are going to be impacted. I'm very upset that our state politicians are here being the rah-rah team and supporting this because it's like they think we're all for this. We're not. If those that want this, let them pay for it, because as the gentleman before me said, I don't want to pay for it because it's going to benefit a few. It's not going to benefit me and a lot of my neighbors. I don't want to fear for my grandchildren's safety when they're playing in my three-acre field that could be imminently dominated at some point and taken from me that I have paid for, whether I do anything with it or not. But whether safety concerns have been addressed, things happen. I don't want to see other lives lost like the Horrants when that tragedy happened. This is just about the money. If we follow the money, we're going to know what this is all about, and it's not about economic impact, it's about human impact. So those of you that really want this, need to stop and think. What are you going to say to your maker when your day comes and he asks you a few questions? And that might be one of, we don't know. But I don't want it, and I don't care who likes me or who doesn't, but I want, you know, I want these families to protect it because if you take their ground away, like I said, who's to say you're not going to come after more ground or whatever? And as a taxpayer, I don't want to pay for it. Thank you.
All right, Jean, I think we cut you off in the middle here.
I'll continue on on the lack of economic impact. And here's a headline from our Greensburg Daily News of 6/1914 by Boris Latwic. Consultant: Difficult to Predict Larger Airport's Impact on Job Creation. Now I would like to quote Attorney Steve Taber, who was an aviation specialist and former FAA environmental attorney, in the response he wrote for us to the preceding draft environmental assessment. In his conclusion on Part D, he wrote, "The draft EA has failed to establish a valid purpose and need since it does not show a need for the project and fails to establish ARC 2-C as the correct category for I-34's dimensional standards under FAA Ordance 1590.3C. The letters of support are rife with inaccurate and false information and cannot be given credibility to support a project of this magnitude. Thus, they must be eliminated in the draft EA deemed inadequate since it did not follow proper FAA protocol in establishing the proper critical design aircraft. Moreover, there are several airports in the vicinity that can accommodate any increase in air traffic that are within 30 miles of Greensburg that would meet the purpose and need described in the draft environmental assessment, thus obviating the need to further expand I-34. Therefore, the only conclusion that can be drawn is that the draft environmental assessment was inadequate." A copy of Mr. Taber's representation for us can be found on our website at www greensburgairport.com, and I am going to resubmit a copy for the record of this public hearing. Attorney Taber also confirmed that the FAA safety requirements could be met at the current facility with an extremely small amount of farm ground as compared to the current project. There is another answer to this problem. For the small amount of jets we will have come into the Greensburg Airport, let them buy Honda manufacturing's very light jet called a BLJ, whose takeoff distance is 3,120 feet and landing requirements of 2,500 feet. The size of our current airport runway, as they stated earlier, is 3,433 feet. It just seems to me that this would put the cost where it is warranted. In conclusion, I would like to quote another headline that was in our Greensburg Daily News dated February 13 of 14 by Boris Latwic, and it states, "DeCater County Job Growth Second in the State." If we truly need this project for economic growth, how in the world did we beat out all but one county in the entire state of Indiana in job growth when many of them haven't expanded their airport already? I have been following this issue for many, many years, and we do not need the scope and size of this proposed airport. What we do need is preserve our farm ground and the rights according to our republic of these individuals." Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if you didn't sign up on the speaker's schedule, now's the time to raise your hand if you recognize, if you'd like to speak. Gentleman in the back row.
Kaywood Lindsey, 445 East 5A in North Greensburg. I just simply are listening. I probably don't have any real interest in the airport or say. I've lived in the county now for 50 years, and we have hired a crew to come in and give us their analysis of what this county needs, and I would have to accept what they tell me. I've only been on the airport property four or five times, and most of that is for power of pass. The flying part, I really have no interest, but you have to make an investment in your community, and if you can make that investment for 5% of the total, that sounds pretty good. We've heard about safety issues, the ballpark, hey, I know there was a lot of reporting ballpark. Personally, every major airport in the world has located in a metropolitan area. I would think we'd be much safer living at the end of the runway than trying to drive up I-74. And also, one thing, and I'll ask the board a question, that apparently is, according to a letter in the paper in the last few days, a very significant tax incentive for property that's taken under eminent domain? Does anybody care to share with me what that?
We're not, really not answering the question.
Okay, all right. But I support what the board has done. Probably never utilize it myself, but make the investment in your community. It probably won't, if it doesn't, you know, it's better to try and fail, but I have, but it will all pay.
Others? Oh, Mr. Rob, yes.
I think we're all missing a spot of information that environmental studies have been proved. So I don't know how, what the steps are. But what is the significance of that not being approved? That stopped everything?
Purpose of the hearing is your comments on environmental assessment.
Okay. So when, how, I don't know when it was done, when expiration date is, or how that moves forward. So if I could get some information from someone of them, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
It is my understanding that the board has...
May please.
Oh, sorry. My name is Deborah Kilmore Potter. I live at 1512 North Short Street. I moved here a couple of years ago. But it is my understanding that the board meets monthly, have met monthly for years. It's reported in the Greensburg newspaper. Those who don't have the Greensburg newspaper can see it on the, hear it on the radio. If they don't have a radio and they have a computer, they read about it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but they can read about it on doki t r e community dot com. So it kind of baffles me that I was at the meeting in 2012. I drove in from Bloomington, because at that time I did not live here. It kind of baffles me that people aren't here saying, "I didn't know anything." I didn't know anything because, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, you come to the meetings, Gene, you come to the meetings. The meetings are open to the public. Is that not correct?
Yes. But I will also comment that a lot of the information is not given out at the meetings.
So that people can come to all of these meetings. So I just wanted to just state that fact, that people can come to the, to the meetings, whether you're for the airport or not. So I just wanted to state that fact.
Thank you. Mr. Robbins.
The young lady that just spoke, she spoke correctly about the monthly meeting. But there's no business other than paying bills told at that meeting. And matter of fact, I know of one board member that didn't know about things happening with the board until he stumbled onto it and had to ask questions about it. Now to me, that smells fishy. Now, I may be able to get it off of the internet. But do you come monthly to the meeting?
I have.
And what have you learned?
If you did address the, if you did address the environmental assessment, and the folks here, we're not going to get an argument.
That I wasn't arguing, I was asking a question.
We don't need to address questions to other folks. You can address, you can address your comments.
Okay, when am I going to give the answers to my questions? That's where I want to know. When will I give the answers to my questions? Don, would you see that I get the answers to my question? Mr. President, would you see that I get the answers to the questions?
Sir, your comments about the environmental assessment, now is the time to make your comments with regard to the environmental assessment.
Okay. My re-lecterlection of this impact study was that in 2012, the impact study was done. But the board did not have information about it, and they wanted to have an emergency meeting here, in this room, with most of these people present, to find out what the impact was going to be. So in 2012, you put a time limit on the response. You got the response at this meeting. And then the next thing we know, here it is, 2017, and we still don't have the answers except for what's in this paper. Now, I'm addressing this board and the FAA asking that I get answers to these questions. Thank you.
Anyone else that has comments with regard to the draft environmental assessment? If not, that will conclude the public hearing this evening. We thank you all for attending, and we ask you to drive safely home.